Avon, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo.
Here.
Groveland, Lester, Lima, Lebonia, Mount Morris, North Danville, Nunde, Austin, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, West Sparta, York.
Today's veteran is Angela Wint Sherman. Seaman Angela Wint Sherman was born in Hornell and is a graduate of Dansville Central School. After graduation, she enlisted in the United States Navy, serving from April 26, 1993, until her honorable discharge on January 31, 1995. Angela completed her basic training at Orlando, Florida Recruit Training Command and was stationed at Personnel Support Detachment Naval Air Station Pensacola in Florida. During her tenure, she worked temporary active duty assignment, working yeoman administrative duties at Lockland Air Force Base in San Antonio, Texas, and again, temporary active duty assignment to Bethesda, Maryland before her discharge in Pensacola. For her military service, Seaman Wint Sherman was awarded the National Defense Service Medal. Upon completion of her military service, Angela returned home and completed her Associates in Arts at Genesee Community College. For employment, she had several jobs, including GCC tutor and worked at Noize Memorial Hospital in Dansville. She loves being outdoors and enjoys hiking and spending time with her family. Angela is an active member of the Veteran of Foreign Wars Auxiliary in Dansville post 6780. She currently resides in Dansville with her husband Chad and together have four sons, Blake Carroll, Justin Carroll, Chad Sherman II, and Adam Sherman. Angela, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Angela, for your service in the United States Navy, the Board of Supervisors is pleased to present you with a certificate of appreciation.
We do have minutes of the last regular board meeting. Any consideration? Does anyone have any changes they wish to bring forward at this time? Hearing none, I look for a motion in a second, please.
Second, fourth.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
opposed, unmissed, they're carried. Communications, please.
Receipt of notification from the villages of the Avon, Caledonia, Dansville, Geneseo, Lester, Lima, Mount Morris, and Nunde requesting the county treasurer plus delinquent village taxes for the year 2023-2024 in Local Law 7, 2023, was filed by the Department of State on October 5, 2023.
Thank you. Ian, we have a local law to be introduced this afternoon.
Yeah, today's local law is related to the tax levy limitations for Livingston County. Annually, we have what's called a property tax cap limitation that's usually about 2%. So the county has the ability via local law to indicate that we may override. We have done that before, including last year. Just on raw numbers, the amount that we have subject to the cap is about $600,000. Just off the top of my head, we have one single mandate alone out of Social Services that is about double that as far as an annual impact year to year. So, you know, total that with all the other things that we have going on, there's an expectation that the budget as presented and potentially passed may have, may necessitate an override to that tax levy limit, even if it's 2.1, 2.2, 3%. We would need to do something like this. So this is the introduction of that local law to allow for that ability in the budget process.
Thank you. Next, we have the abstract claims. Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract of claims and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Naft. Is there any questions or discussion on this abstract of claims? Hearing none, go please yourself.
Avon, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Lebonia, Mount Morris, North Danville, Nunde, Austin, Portage, Sparta, Springwater, North Sparta, York. Eyes 4928, absent 126.
We do have two requests this afternoon for the board of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I request privileges of the floor for Amanda Schultz, Communication Director, and Peter Keough, New York State Sheriff's Association for the 9/11 re-accreditation.
Thank you, Ms. Damm.
Chairman LaFever, Manager Coyle, members of the board, and citizens of Livingston County and guests, it's my pleasure to be here today. I'm Peter Keough, the Executive Director of the New York State Sheriff's Association, and it's my pleasure to be here today again on behalf of all the sheriffs of New York State to recognize and honor Sheriff Tom Dougherty and the men and women of the Livingston County Sheriff's Office on the occasion of re-accreditation of the sheriff's Public Safety Answering Point and Communications Bureau. Only 13 of the state's 62 counties have qualified for communications accreditation, so obviously, this is no easy accomplishment. Furthermore, Sheriff Dougherty and his office have obtained accreditation of their jail, the civil office, the court security division, and the law enforcement division. In short, all of the statewide accreditations that are available to your sheriff's office have been gained by your sheriff's office. That is a great testament to Sheriff Dougherty and the entire staff of your sheriff's office, and it clearly demonstrates their dedication to the pursuit of excellence as they serve the citizens of Livingston County. So you have an outstanding sheriff's and sheriff's office, which, as I'm sure you know, is well-respected across the state. And the citizens of Livingston County and this board, as the body responsible for financial support of your sheriff's office, should be very proud of that office. Today, we focus our attention on the Public Safety Answering Point and the Communications Bureau. The PSAP is the lifeline, really, for virtually all of the emergency services in the county, 11 police agencies, 19 fire departments, and 11 EMS entities. In an emergency year, communications officers must get the right services to the right place and right away. It takes skill to quickly know what to send and where to send it. It often takes skill and patience just to get accurate, needed information out of a desperate person who's on the other end of the line. And it's really amazing to watch these communications officers working, multitasking under stressful circumstances, calmly directing the emergency responders while also keeping the caller calm and engaged. We are indebted to all these good public servants for their conscientious service to the citizens of Livingston County. Livingston County's modern PSAP and the well-trained, efficient communications bureau staff which operates it is a tremendous service that this board and your sheriff provides to the citizens of Livingston County, and you all share in this honor today. PSAP, Emergency Communications Accreditation, is not something that's available just for the asking. To achieve accreditation requires that the sheriff's communication bureau meets a very stringent set of standards and best practices developed by experts in the field of public safety communications. These standards currently have 70 individual components with many subparts, all dealing with every aspect of emergency services communications. To gain accreditation, a public safety answering point must submit itself to scrutiny by an outside board of assessors, which reviews the agency's operations in detail to assure that it meets every one of these demanding standards and best practices. And I'm happy to report today that the Livingston County Sheriff's Office has been cited by the assessors as having met and, in most cases, exceeded every one of those standards and best practices. So congratulations are in order for Sheriff Dougherty, Under Sheriff Bean, Director Amanda Schultz, and the men and women who are so able to operate your PSAP, and all the men and women of the Livingston County Sheriff's Office for this accomplishment, which we recognize today. And I want to say that congratulations are also in order for the Livingston County Board of Supervisors and for the citizens of Livingston County, for without your support, your moral support, and your financial support, this achievement and all the outstanding service provided by your sheriff's office to all the citizens of Livingston County and all the areas of sheriff's responsibility would not be possible. And I also want to say that accreditation does not just happen. It takes a lot of hard work by a lot of people, and the entire staff of the sheriff's communication bureau deserve to be recognized and applauded for this achievement today. But particularly want to recognize one individual who devoted a great deal of extra time and effort to the many administrative and operational details required in order to demonstrate that your PSAP is most deserving of this accreditation. And so I would ask dispatcher Heather Gross to come forward and receive this certificate recognizing all her hard work on this project. And I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for affording me this opportunity to publicly proclaim all the great work that's being done by your sheriff's office here in Livingston County for all of your citizens. And at this time, I would ask Sheriff Dougherty accept this plaque which commemorates this achievement today. Thank you.
Sheriff?
I'll be brief. I just want to say thank you. We've been over here quite a bit for different accreditations over the years. They're all hard work. The sheriff gets way too much credit for it, and it's all the members that make it happen. So special, special shout out to Heather. She worked really hard on this. Special shout out to Director Amanda Schultz, who continues to lead a great team there. All this happens by teamwork. I mean, we know this. We've talked about it a lot. If the board doesn't support it, we can't do it. If the county administrator doesn't support it, we can't do it, the chairman, et cetera. And then when it gets to us, if we don't have full buy-in from our team, this stuff doesn't happen. So I know all the hard work that goes into receiving this plaque, but it's much more than a plaque. It is really best practices. It's what makes our office top-notch, top-shelf, and our community trusts us because of that. So it is all well worth it, but again, a lot of hard work. I want to thank Peter for coming down here. Peter's been our Executive Director for 48 years. I did tell him we're going to be losing our county administrator soon, so if he's interested in transitioning to a new career, it may be a possibility. But Peter constantly makes this trip up and down the interstate or the throughway, and it's a long haul from Albany, but he always makes it a point to come out to all the different counties. And Peter, I just want you to know, I appreciate your support over all these years and always going out of your way to highlight the great things that our sheriff's office is doing. So again, thank you to the community. Thank you to the board. We appreciate your support.
We do have a second privilege of the floor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I request privilege of the floor for David Cherry, Veteran Services Agency Director, and he will be giving a departmental update.
Good afternoon. It's been quite a year. It feels like it was just yesterday that I was standing in front of you as a new director. So what I'm going to be talking about today is a lot of what we've done over the past year and the future of our office. And usually, when I get a chance to talk and let people know about what my office is all about, I try to associate quotes or somebody that everybody would be recognized to be affiliated with the ideas of how I want my office to run. And as I was kind of getting this presentation set up, I was thinking of a speech that General Colin Powell did, and it was actually an interview question. And he was either Secretary of State or Joint Chief of Staff at the time when he was asked a question on what makes an effective leader. And in a very split second, he had a quick answer and a three-minute answer to this question, and he had a lot of statements that affiliate with how Livingston County Veteran Service Agency runs. And I was debating on how can I utilize these quotes with the topics that I want to talk about today? And I'm like, should I use them? Should I not? And as I was putting my presentation together, Bill Mann on LinkedIn posted that interview of General Colin Powell, and I'm like, here, I'm humming and hawing, should I use these quotes? And all of a sudden, I saw this on his profile, and I'm like, today, you're getting some quotes. So I started with a quote on my cover sheet here. "You will know you're a good leader when people follow you, even if they follow you out of curiosity." And this one makes me laugh, but it has a lot of thought, and it makes you in the thought process. And today, I'm going to be talking about that curiosity with veterans. And when I talk about being a good leader, I'm going to give you some examples. And as I say examples of being a good leader, I am not talking about myself as the Director of Veteran Service Office. I'm talking about my office as it relates to veterans in the community, and it's everybody that's in my office as far as leadership. So as I give these examples, I'm not talking about me here. I'm talking about my office as a whole, and as we go through these slides, you'll understand where I'm coming from. There, only one more. Yeah, it's on the green here. Nope, all right. Well, I can get started anyway as we speak here. But in my office, we now have Darren Hamilton. Darren is here today. He's sitting over here. He is my new Veteran Service Officer. We hired him in May. So up until May, I was doing everything by myself as far as claims, and so having Darren has been a godsend in my office. Starting in May, he completed his basic training, and by September, just last month, he started doing claims on his own in that aspect. So it alleviated a lot more off my plate where I was able to do more of my job as a director role versus trying to fill into every positions. I also have Sarah McDonald, who's my account clerk typist. She's a rock star when it comes to veterans' expectations, because over the past year, we have had an intake on veterans coming into my office, and it has taken veterans sometimes a month to get an appointment in my office for availability. And she keeps them with the expectations and understanding, so they come into my office knowing the process and stuff of that nature, coming into my office with everything that they need, and she's been really good at that. Also, as well, from my office, I just have to give a little shout out, but in August of this year, on August 12th, a year ago, I told Sarah, my secretary, I said, Sarah, I'm like, I'm going to do something crazy that I've never done before, because I'm a veteran and I've always been used to working out, and I can't work out like I used to because of some of my physical ailments of my own. So I said, I'm going to sign up for this hike at Letchworth State Park, and we did this mammoth march. It's a 20-mile hike in Letchworth State Park. Elevation is absolutely crazy, but when I told her I wanted to do this and I was going to prepare over the past year for this hike, she goes, I want to do this too. She goes, do you mind if I do this? And I go, no, not at all. So she signed up, and she completed that 20-mile hike as well in Letchworth State Park. This morning, today, this mammoth march announced that they're coming back to Letchworth next year on August 10th, and even Darren said he's interested in doing that, so hopefully I can get 100% of my office doing this 20-mile hike. So it's a proud moment in our office, and we talk about it and we laugh about it, so I wanted to mention that today. I also want to mention a third thing about being a Veteran Service Officer in my office. I was looking at our budgets and trying to see how can I help, what can I do in my office? What I really need is a Veteran Service Officer, somebody that can sit down with the veteran handling claims in those appointments. So at this time, I chose not to backfill the deputy director position in my office, and we're going to bring in another Veteran Service Officer. I think it will be cost-effective, and it will be most impactful in the county for my department. And when we were interviewing for Darren's position, there was a lot of people that applied that were not, that didn't meet the qualifications to even get into my office to do an interview. So we went to the drawing boards with personnel who did an amazing job with this project. But what we're going to do is we're going to be drafting a Veteran Service Officer trainee position, kind of like what probation does, where they have a trainee position for a year, and then they move up to that probation job as a probation officer. We're going to do that in our office. So we're going to get somebody that's going to have hands-on, a year experience as a Veteran Service Officer, get all the qualifications they need, and after one year, they will become a full-pledged Veteran Service Officer. So we went to New York State with that, saying, can we do this? And they were on board. We're the first county in New York State to do that. There is no trainee position for a Veteran Service Officer. So once again, hopefully Livingston County may lead the way in a new way of doing things as far as in my community for Veteran Service Officers. So I personally wanted to say a thank you to Human Resources and their efforts through the state approval, also through Human Resources. There's been 25 veterans throughout this year that got their fees waived for civil service exams that we passed through here at the board. I'm going to talk about some data. I'm not going to be big on graphs. I'm going to be very brief and to the point with you on some of the things that we've done, and I want to talk to you a little bit about my office and go into that one discussion of curiosity that I mentioned at the beginning. So from January to July of this year, we processed 115 claims, and we processed 38 what we call intent-to-files. I'm going to say this briefly just because it has to do with what I'm going to say in a couple moments, but an intent-to-file is not a claim, but it's paperwork that you submit to the VA saying, we're going to be working on a claim. It establishes a start date to a claim. And when you do an intent-to-file, you have up to one year to process a claim. If you come to me, the veteran, if they come to me over a year and say, I'm ready to put in my claim now, that intent-to-file has expired. But if they come into my office and do a claim within one year and they process that claim, then the start date of their payments, if they get compensatable amounts, goes to the date of that intent-to-file, not when we do the claim, if that makes sense. So the intent-to-file process just starts the paperwork to the VA, getting the ball rolling, and establishes a start date to a claim. I've also had five claims put into the appeals court. In order to get in front of a judge, it takes nearly two years right now for a veteran to get in front of a judge. In addition to putting in five claims this year to ask for a court date, I've had five court cases. I've had three in my office and two where I've actually had to go to the courthouse in Buffalo to represent the veteran in those regards towards claims. Another quote that General Colin Powell said is, "Leadership comes down to creating conditions of trust within an organization." And that trust factor in my office comes down to two points, honesty and understanding. And the biggest point I can get across to a veteran that comes into my office is letting them know the process and understand from beginning to end, because so many times navigating the VA is so extremely complicated, and all it does is it leaves a veteran frustrated and just wants them to give up. And that's one thing I tell each and every veteran that walks in my door, no matter what they do, do not ever give up towards your due benefit. And I want to give you a short spiel that I give every veteran that comes into my door, because a lot of people don't understand this aspect of the VA. When you hear VA, you think of the VA, one VA. I put up here a little triangle, because the VA is made up of three different entities, and three different entities of the VA. You have the VHA, which is the healthcare administration. We do not have a VA in Livingston County, but we are surrounded by them. Bath to the south, Kiwanis-Dee to the east, Batavia to the west, and Rochester to the north on Calkins Road and Henrietta. You have the NCA, the National Cemetery Association, that's your burial benefits. And then you have the VBA, the benefits administration, and that's your compensation claims, your pensions for low income. That's where all the money comes from, from the VA. Three different entities of the VA that I just mentioned that do not communicate to each other, the three different aspects of the VA. My goal, when a veteran comes in and I'm trying to connect them to benefits, is to get them in the healthcare administration, to get them connected to the resources and needs that they can be met. Sometimes, that means going through the VBA and going through benefits, because to be eligible for veterans' healthcare, you're automatically eligible if you're a service-connected disabled veteran. But if you don't have a disability rating, it's strictly based off your household income. So you may have a veteran, and I think I mentioned it last year, I had two World War II veterans in this county that were not eligible for VA healthcare because they made too much money and they did not have a service-connected disability. And in my opinion, that is wrong, and they should be eligible for those VA resources. So sometimes, we have to go through the benefits, and the benefit side is where the veteran sees that mighty dollar that put in their pocket for disabilities. So I have to break down that barrier of those benefits and connect the dots of educating them of what it means to get enrolled in the healthcare administration in that side. I wanted to give you that piece today because that's something that we talk to every veteran when they come in the door, because what I have seen in the past year and since Darren's been starting is we're seeing a lot of new veterans coming into my office. The numbers are almost the same as about last year of veterans coming in the door, but it's not the same veterans coming in for repeated appointments. We're doing pretty good at getting veterans coming in and getting their needs met within a one or two appointments, but we're seeing a lot of new veterans coming in. And I will be talking about why in just a moment as I continue here in that aspect. So I wanted to bring that to your attention as well, that we're getting the right veterans coming in the door, because we're seeing increased numbers in that aspect. So I mentioned the stats, what we did up until August. So you may have heard of the PACT Act or know of the PACT Act. If you've seen those commercials regarding water contaminations at Camp Lejeune's, or you got that phone call, whether you're a veteran or not, that all fell under the PACT Act. That was a law that was passed in August 10th of 2022. And what happens is if a veteran filed a claim, I mentioned that intent-to-file process, if a veteran filed a claim within one year, so of that August 10th of 2022, from the law passing, then the pay date of their claim starts to when the law went into effect. And that law was named after the Sergeant First Class Heath Robinson, honoring our promises to address the comprehensive toxics called the PACT Act, and that's who the law was named after. And why I tell you that today is because we came up on that one-year deadline. I always anticipate at tax season, at the end of, when a veteran can put in for a tax exemption on their property, we get an intake in our office of veterans filing for that tax exempt break on their property. So I anticipated a little tick of veterans coming in at that one-year mark of the PACT Act. What I didn't anticipate was a lot of veterans coming in my door. So what we did was on August 7th and 8th of this year, just before the deadline, we extended our hours, so after hours, we just said, just come in from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. We were not going to have a scheduled appointment. We'll try to get things done for you, because August 9th was the original deadline for PACT Act claims. And during that timeframe, we processed 49 claims and 37 intent-to-files in those two days. Darren had a huge part in that, and he's new and learning the process, and it more than doubled what we typically do on a monthly basis of veterans coming in in two days in that process. So by a veteran doing an intent-to-file before August 10th of 2022, what that means is they have a year to put in that claim. So you had the law passed of August 10th, 2022. They put an intent-to-file before August 10th of 2023. They have up to one year to put in a claim, and when they put in that claim, if they get any kind of reimbursement, it goes back to August 10th, 2022. So we really pushed it out to the veteran community. If you know you may be entitled to a benefit, come in and fill out the paperwork. We'll see, we'll investigate, we'll look, because if you can be entitled to a benefit, if you miss those dates, you're missing out a whole year's worth of back pay. We're trying to support the veterans in doing so. In addition to doing that process, we also went to the CNR and met with the veterans over there. We had seven intent-to-files and two veterans actually put in a claim. That also opened dialogues, because you know we do all these activities and stuff throughout the year with veterans. It opened up dialogues for activities at the nursing home, and we've been actively engaged in doing some activities already. We've had two activities, and we have some coming in the near future. So it was great for this process and that aspect as well. So August was a big month. It's the largest month I think we've ever had for benefits in the office since we've ever had it that I know of. Leaders take organizations past the level that science and management says is possible. And one of the things that Colin Powell said in his spiel in his couple minutes, he says, you know, if you go into combat and you're leading and you show them that you're tired and you show them that you're hungry and you show them that you're cold, then those soldiers are going to be hungry, tired, and cold. But if you go in as a leader with the right attitude and your followers are going to do the same thing, even if they're following you. do the same thing, even if they're following you, once again, if they're following you under curiosity. So I wanted to talk to you about something that recently happened with the VA in the process of hypertension. And this has been, to say it nicely, has been a thorn in my existence towards veterans' benefits. And when they came out with the PACT Act, one of the things the VA said at the time when the law came out in '22, they said, by the way, Vietnam veterans were adding hypertension as a new presumptive to military service linked to Agent Orange exposure. So because that was added as a new presumptive, I'm just going to say it right now, who doesn't have hypertension? Everybody has high blood pressure. So because of the age of Vietnam veterans, I think the VA put it as a presumptive because rather to tip the scale, they thought it was just more efficient to get that hypertension as a presumptive. What it does is it allows the veterans to be service-connected and it allows them to automatically be enrolled in VA healthcare. So they don't have to go through the income verification. So if they have that service connection for hypertension, it increases the veterans that would be eligible for VA healthcare. So what the VA told us when they came out in the law says, by the way, we're adding this as a presumptive, but we are not going to pay out veterans until 2026, is when they were going to start paying veterans for hypertension. That was the law. That is what I presumed as a veteran service officer. And so what was happening was all these claims were coming back with veterans saying, we're service connecting you, but you're zero percent, meaning we're not paying you, but we're service connecting you, so you're eligible for VA healthcare. My understanding was, okay, there's zero percent. But what the VA didn't do when they pronounced this law was they didn't say how they were going to service connect them in 2026. So knowing that we had an unknown, I kept my own spreadsheet of every veteran that put in a claim for hypertension. In the process, the VA changed their philosophy and said, never mind, we are not going to pay out in 2026. We are going to start paying out veterans now. But what they decided to do because of how many hypertension claims that they had is said, we're going to go to an automated process at handling hypertension claims. So a claim for hypertension was not seeing a human being, it was not going in front of a person. It was going into an automated system. And it came back that too many veterans were either not getting ratings or too many were zero percent. So it was a red flag. So the Office of Inspector General investigated it and came out with a report that the VA didn't announce this automated process. It was done improperly. I'm sitting on 32 veterans here in the county that should have a service-connected disabled disability rating for hypertension that are not receiving one right now. And that's a process and a fight that I'm doing. So that's kind of what you, just in a spiel of what you see that we do in my office and how we advocate for veterans towards their benefits. And that's one of the aspects of a larger picture of one project that we have going on. So we are home of Operation Green Light. We're in the middle of Operation Green Light. Thank you so much for your support regarding this. It was established in Livingston County in 2021, though it's not our logo. It won a national award-winning logo for Operation Green Light that became recognized after we started this operation. The recognized period, we are in it right now, from October 11th through November 17th of this year. Nationwide, it will be recognized November 6th through November 12th. And I wanted to bring this to your attention because I wanted to let you know the full engagement of what Operation Green Light is in that aspect. So you will see phase one. I've dealt with a lot of local non-veteran group organizations to participate in Operation Green Light. I've gone to several organizations. I've been to the Lions Club in Dansville, Rotarys in Avon, Caledonia and Geneseeo. I talked to the Freemasons Union out of Lima on how they could support Operation Green Light. For example, I'll give you the Lions Club in Dansville. They wanted to make green lights available to children that are going through the Y through the program. So they were able to give children a green light to take home, to put up either on their porch or in a window or something of that nature to recognize veterans. Newly this year, we let it to be lit up in green on the Mount Morris campus, the social services building. My goal and my intention was as people are passing through Livingston County and they're going on the 390 and they look at, towards Mount Morris and they see that light on top of the hill, they will see this big green beam coming off the hill. And maybe it will make them wonder and Google it and say, what's that green light in Mount Morris? And they will learn about Operation Green Light. It is still a continued effort because the light is a little dimmer than I was anticipating. And we're working on trying to make it a little bit of a darker green so people can actually see it. And the Livingston County Veteran Monument on Gypsy Lane, we have the flag poles, so the flags can be lit up in green as well. But that is phase one, is the public approach of Operation Green Light. So people can honor the veterans. There is a phase two of Operation Green Light, and that's more in the back front of what veterans can do among veterans. And on August 29th of 2023, there is a launch of what they call Onward Ops. It's formerly known as the ETS, the Expiration Term of Service Sponsor Program that we previously had. We were in the initial phases of it last year. And what this is, is this takes veterans, when they're coming off active duty and they're coming home, we're building a program where we can sponsor them. So when a veteran gets out of the military, they're handed their DD 214 and they get sent home and they don't have any support. So what this phase two of Operation Green Light is supporting those veterans that come back home to our county. One, it allows us to recruit for veterans on why they should choose LivCo. Why should they come to Livingston County? Here's a perfect opportunity where we can reach out to veterans because we recognize them and show them what we have to offer. I expect to have more info in November and December regarding this program of onward ops, but I'm going to be talking about this program right now. What it does is this bridges the, what we call the deadly gap. So the highest rate of veteran suicide is in that first year of getting off active duty, where veterans don't have that support when they come back home. And they're at the highest rate of possibly committing suicide. So this program starts six to 12 months before a veteran gets out of the service. And it allows them to recognize a sponsorship where they can connect with somebody back in their hometown. Communities are aware of incoming veterans. What this does is this gives me an access, we work out of a Google database, that gives me an access of veterans that are coming home. I know who's getting out of the military and who's going to be coming back to this area. And it's something that's going to be growing in the near future and I'm really excited about it. And I'm going to be showing you a couple of slides on that before I finish here today. At this database access, I'm anticipating in November or December of this year, getting access to this database through the onward ops. So this is an ongoing process. It is fairly new. It has been ongoing elsewhere and I'll be discussing that here in a second. The population that we serve, if you see circled in red, the top 12 destinations of veterans going home after the military service, New York is number four. Texas is number one. And you see California, Florida and then New York. About 80% male, 20% female veterans coming home. About 78% of the veterans know when they get out of the service, where they're going, where their destination is. That leaves about 22% uncertain. Employment, school, where can they settle down? Here's where we can try to sponsor veterans and try to bring them back to Livingston County. So this is one of the aspects of what this program will do, and it's kind of the population of veterans that we are going to be working with. The sponsorship program, the top 10 states for the sponsorship. We were number one because we started the program here through Operation Green Light, but not as many counties in New York took to that ETS program, which eventually ended up becoming this current program that we have now. But one place that did grab onto it is the state of Texas. And the state of Texas is very successful with this program because that's where most veterans are going. And they took on board to the sponsorship program. So we're kind of modeling what they're doing in Texas and we're kind of bringing it back home to get reestablished here. And that's what we're doing with onward ops. So there's going to be this little dashboard that you will have, the sponsor. If a veteran wants to sponsor another veteran, so I'm going to give an example, a veteran getting out of the military, is married and has two kids, we want to try to connect them to a veteran that's got a family, maybe kids, that could sponsor that veteran to answer questions about school districts, about property, or anything to meet their needs and to make it comfortable for them to come home. And when they get established here, they have somebody they can communicate with towards their benefits and things of that nature. This is what the dashboard is going to look like for a sponsor. It has an enrollment section, an intake form, an action plan. They go through a training and then it lines them up with a veteran and then they could either accept or decline that veteran or that military member that's becoming a veteran. And this is the dashboard that will allow them to connect to each other. So I think this is very unique and something that's very interesting in how we're going to be able to communicate with veterans and their benefits moving forward. So there's a dashboard for the service member. And I wanted to show you briefly on what this dashboard for the service member is going to look like because it has a characteristic that I'm very excited about. And that characteristic is where the veteran, while they're on active duty, can put their medical records and any disability information in the system. So when they file for that VA claim, there's no longer of, I need to get my records, I need to go to National Archives and wait a year for my records to come to me. They can already download it and have it in a system. It's going to allow myself and my office as veteran service officers to be more proactive than reactive towards veterans' benefits. And I think that's going to be a sort of change that you're going to see on how we're associating veterans towards their benefits. And I'm really excited about this opportunity. It will make our jobs a lot easier and to advocate for a veteran. So I wanted to give you a quick synopsis on that database so you could kind of see what it's going to look like. I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago, on September 14th, the American Legion had their National Commander visit and they happened to be in Livingston County. When I found out that they were coming to our Poppy Monument, I reached out to the American Legion and said, hey, can I be there? Should I be there? Do you want me to talk about it? So they know what it's about. And so they said, sure, why not? Come on out. So I was able to give about a 25-minute presentation on the Poppy Monument about Livingston County, about all the great things we're doing with veterans. And now the National Commander knows about Operation Green Light, a sponsorship program for veterans that he was very intrigued on. And he was very enticed on what we had to say. And so that's going to open up conversations, not only locally, but to the American Legion on a national level. And I got some very positive feedback on our visit here in Livingston County that we provided some great information that he hadn't gotten elsewhere and all his visits going around the country. So I was very proud of that. Oops, sorry about that. The other aspect, so I wanted to talk about in that aspect is we also have the indigent burial process. I'm designated for indigent burials, one of the reports I need to do at the end of the year. I just wanted to give you a heads up to this date so far, we've had two indigent burials. One is to the state for reimbursement that's already been paid for. So I'm waiting for the state to reimburse me for $2,000. And then there's one that's paid out to a funeral home right now for their payments. Once I know that goes through, then I can go back to the state and get their refund in for another $2,000. So we're up to two. I did a training session in August of this year through New York State and the topic was indigent burials. So one of the things that I've learned on the topic since the law went into effect in 2017 is there's no deadline to apply for an indigent burial reimbursement. So I'm like, wow, I could go back to 2017. And I've been very busy, so I haven't been able to do a lot of digging, but in just my immediate research, I found one indigent burial that we did in about 2019 that I'm like, wow, I can be reimbursed for it. It fits the criteria of the requirements to be reimbursed for indigent burial because there's an email chain and it went to our office through an email and we said, hey, yes, let's process this indigent burial, which is one of the requirements. So I'm looking to see if there's more that possibly there could be income that comes in from the state up to 2017. So now I want to get to the part of the presentation of the exciting things that we do in Livingston County. Probably everybody knows now of the Dwyer programs that we do and I wanted to give you an update. We have been doing this for one year now and I want to tell you of the success of what we've been doing so far. Before I do, I wanted to show you who this Joseph P. Dwyer is. Private Dwyer was in the Army. He was born September 28th, 1976 and expired on June 28th, 2008 due to suicide. He became famous, known for a photograph that was taken of him helping an ailing Iraqi boy. And that photo of him went all across the globe and he became popular. And he struggled with that and he had to deal with his own demons when he came back out of the military and he took his life. So the program that we have now as the private Joseph Dwyer program is named after him. He enlisted in the Army after 9/11 and served as a combat medic in the 3rd Infantry. So I wanted to show you his face so you understand and you can put a name to what we're doing and the successes that we're having here through our programs. First, I need to mention Bob Walter. Unfortunately, he couldn't make it today. He's a little under the weather today. So he is our Veterans One Stop Center, Livingston County Peer Support Coordinator. He gets to run all my activities, all these fun activities we do in the county. He organizes them. And since October 8th, when we first started these events, he hit the ground running and I can't say enough of what he's done for our veterans in our community. So far to date, from October 8th of last year to September 22nd of this year, we've held a total of 91 events for veterans, including 835 participants. That involves veterans events, veterans plus the supporter, could be their spouse or plus one events. And then we had veteran family events. On June 10th, we had our first annual chicken barbecue for the veterans of Livingston County and their families, which brought out 261 chicken dinners that we gave to veterans in the community. Somebody that came as a family member of veteran, came to this chicken barbecue and learned about the programs that we're doing in Livingston County and said, this is fantastic. They went back to their company and said, this is what Livingston County is doing. They took some funds and turned around, went back to Veterans One Stop and said, we want you to continue this and do another dinner, but I want you to cover all the counties that you cover. So a couple of months later, on September 2nd of this year, we had a 12-county-wide family picnic in the hangar right here in Geneseeo at the airport. And we hosted over 400 families, 400 dinners for veterans. And we just had veterans just come together and it was phenomenal to have them come from all over and we could showcase Livingston County, showcase our Veterans Monument and everything in regards to that. So that's the excitement of some of the things that we've done. I want to briefly talk about an upcoming event that we have here. Our office is sponsoring a hockey event at Geneseeo. You have a flyer in front of you on your desk, please take it back to your town, you can post it. But on November 21st, it's a Tuesday, it's a 4:00 PM puck drop and we're going to be honoring veterans at this game. It's one thing that's dear and near to my heart is hockey. I wanted to do this for a long time. And we were able to break some barriers through New York State to be able to have this happen at the SUNY institution. So I'm really excited about that. They are playing O'Meyer College. We're having a tailgating party for veterans. So any veteran that registers, like they do for all our other events, we're starting at 2 o'clock and the first 100 veterans get a free meal. We also have veterans coming from our nursing home. We have three veterans that are part of this group that are coming to this event as well. And some of the workers of the nursing home is coming to bring them to the game. My family is going to be a ceremonial puck drop, so my kids are very excited. So we're going to do a little ceremony for veterans and we have a lot of treats and specials going on throughout the evening. And hopefully you can come and support the veterans that evening. So I just wanted to give a little shout out for that event. What I want to share with you briefly is three success stories very quickly before I end the day here. One, I want to talk about a veteran we submitted to the Bath VA who had to go to the domiciliary. This veteran did not know the severity of their issues and of their illnesses. And through our programming, we were able to get them some help through the Bath VA. They ended up going through three sessions at the domiciliary. They got out. We were able to connect them to a lot of benefits that we're doing through the Dwyer programs. And they're still going through programs and it literally saved this veteran's life. When I met this veteran, they were jaundice, they were yellow, they didn't even have their skin color. And we were able to get them the healthcare needs through the VA that they'd met. And it was all about programming and hearing about what we're doing in Livingston County and through word of mouth that we were able to save this veteran's life. Veterans number two, I want to mention, we had We had a fishing trip in May on Lake Ontario, and we did charter boats. And when we decided to do a charter boat from Livingston County to go out on the lake, all these other counties saw what we were doing in Erie County, goes, "Hey, that's pretty cool, we want to do the same thing." So they chartered a boat and had a couple of boats for Erie County veterans. So we had a big fishing trip for veterans to go out. And it was a popular event, so we had a lot of veterans sign up for this event. So we have a waitlist for veterans if they don't, if they're unable to sign up. And we had one veteran that was on the waitlist, who was number one on the waitlist, and they got a phone call because somebody called in sick and said, "Hey, I can't go." So we called this one veteran. This veteran is a Vietnam veteran who never, in their life since coming home, acknowledged their military service because of how they got treated after the war when they came home. A lot of people didn't even know that they were a veteran. They felt ashamed of their service and never did anything publicly. And they saw all the things that we were doing and all these activities, so they're like, "Hey, I like fishing, I might sign up on this trip." And this is the veteran that got called to this fishing trip. The very next day, we got a phone call from that veteran's wife, in tears, saying that her husband came home a changed man. And he hasn't been the same since. Now opening up, talking about what he's experienced, what he's went through, and we're able to get this veteran connected to benefits that he never had before. And he was able to communicate with other veterans that have had similar experiences. We had another event that this veteran showed up to, and when they came to this next event, they had a Vietnam Service veteran hat on, and they were proud to show off their new hat. And for the first time ever, publicly acknowledged, "Hey, I'm a Vietnam veteran," and was able to be recognized. If that's not a success story, I don't know what is. But that's what these programs are happening. And I have to mention one other story. We did a golf tournament in Avon, another Vietnam story. What we did is we have veterans sign up, and they have a plus-one, and they come and they do, and we have a little golf tournament, and we randomly put veterans with veterans. And we put these two veterans together that didn't know each other from Adam when they started this golf tournament. And while they were golfing, over 18 holes, found out they both served in Vietnam at the same time with the same unit, and they were together in Vietnam, and they left that golf tournament as two brothers that never even knew that they were both here in Livingston County. And now two men have two people to lean on each other, and two families were made in the veteran community. And once again, another success story of these activities that we're doing, you don't hear about, but you see what these veterans are going through in the community. What we were going to do today is going to have a quick presentation. Unfortunately, my guest could not make it today, but before we lead into the proclamation, I just want to give you a quick story of something that happened here, and then we can go on to the board. So as I finish here today, we were going to do this proclamation today that we're going to have as Lieutenant George Fox Day here in Livingston County. Every year in February, we do Four Chaplains Day in recognition of four chaplains that were on the Dorchester ship that was bombed, and they went down on the ship, and these four chaplains were killed. When we did this last year in February, when we did the press release honoring these four chaplains, we got an email from Mr. Jeffrey Murray, who is a reporter for the Almyra Star Gazette, who says, "Hey, I'm on your email chain. Thank you so much for honoring these four chaplains. Though they're recognized nationally, Livingston County publicly announced these four gentlemen, and I just wanted to share with you that Lieutenant George Fox, one of these chaplains, was my grandfather. And my family wanted to say thank you for acknowledging him." So we were going to honor today this Chaplains Fox Day, and Mr. Murray was going to be here today, but unfortunately could not make it. So he wrote a letter that I wanted to read to you before we continue, and this is the end of my presentation. "To the members of Livingston County Board of Supervisors, County officials, and distinguished guests, I want to extend my sincere thanks and appreciation for your efforts to recognize the heroics and sacrifice of my grandfather, George L. Fox, and the rest of the four chaplains on February 3, 1943. I was hoping to thank you in person today, but circumstances prevented that from happening. God willing, I do plan to attend in February to mark the actual date of the loss of the Dorchester in the selfless efforts of the four chaplains. It is with some sadness, I must note, that my mother, Mary Fox Murray, Reverend Fox's only daughter, passed away recently at the age of 95. She passed away at the beginning of this month. She lived a long and productive life, and she and many others worked for years to preserve the memories of her father and the others who made the ultimate sacrifice. She was aware of the Livingston County recognition and was very grateful for all of the ways people and organizations across the country have immortalized my grandfather and the others. Thank you again for preserving their legacy, and God bless. Sincerely, Jeff Murray from Laualmane, New York." That is my presentation today. Thank you.
Very good. We have a resolution. We're claiming October 25, 2023, as U.S. Army Chaplain Lieutenant George L. Fox Day in Livingston County.
Is there any further discussion on this action item? During non-adjournable motion in the second.
Second, Wester.
Revolting in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Carry the roll please on each decision.
Evan.
Aye.
Telleronia.
Aye.
Canisus.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland, Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Libonia.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Antos.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4928, absent 126, adopted.
We do have two resolutions on the deferred agenda.
Providing for public hearing on proposed Livingston County budget for 2024 pursuant to Section 359 of the New York State county law. Providing for public hearing on proposed local law number D 2023, overriding the tax levy limit for Livingston County for the 2024 fiscal year.
Is there any discussion on either of these two resolutions? Hearing non-adjournable motion in the second.
Wester.
Second, Schuster.
We have a motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Carry that roll please on each decision.
Evan.
Aye.
Telleronia.
Aye.
Canisus.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland, Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Libonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Antos.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4928, absent 126, adopted.
We do have resolutions that are going to require a second vote.
Mr. Knapp, amending the 2023 Livingston County budget. Contingency and workforce, there are two.
Mr. Chairman, with this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any discussion on this resolution? During non-adjournable.
Evan.
Aye.
Telleronia.
Aye.
Canisus.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland, Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Libonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Antos.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4928, absent 126, adopted. Authorizing transfer funds to Department of Health, there are two, and Office of the Agency.
Mr. Chairman, with this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any discussion on any of these transfers? During non-adjournable.
Evan.
Aye.
Telleronia.
Aye.
Canisus.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland, Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Libonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Antos.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4928, absent 126, adopted. Authorization to submit a grant application to the New York State Office of Community Renewal.
Mr. Chairman, with this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any concerns on this grant application? Hearing non-adjournable.
Evan.
Aye.
Telleronia.
Aye.
Canisus.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland, Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Libonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Antos.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4928, absent 126, adopted. Awarding bid for the Central Services Department for Electrical Construction Work for Public Defender Conflict Defender Office renovation, NB Electrical Services, L.O.
Mr. Chairman, with this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Any questions on this awarding of this bid? During non-adjournable.
Evan.
Aye.
Telleronia.
Aye.
Canisus.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland, Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Libonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Antos.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4928, absent 126, adopted.
We do have a resolution that asks for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or concerns on this resolution? During non-adjournable.
Evan.
Aye.
Telleronia.
Aye.
Canisus.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland, Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Libonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Antos.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.